All right, we'll call the April meeting of the Carroll County Council to order. If you please stand, join us for the religious.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce Reverend Guy Steubaker, who is the minister at the Living Faith Church, Brother Billy Edith, through fifty west, outside the door.
And Tim, you have grandchildren, children at Delphi or possible school districts. You may hear them tell stories about Santa Claus. Now, I'm the impersonator there, so. And if anyone wants fish fry tickets, we have Dan's Fish Fry on Saturday night out at the church, so. That's about right. God, you've blessed us county in so many different ways. And even in our struggles, you've been there, supporting each other and helping each other through the difficult times and the good times. Father, just give wisdom around this room today, wisdom to do what needs to be done for the betterment of the entire community. And Father, just allow us to feel your presence in all that we do, not only here, but wherever we go. It's a good county you put us into, Father, to just continue to bless and guide us through all that lies ahead. We praise and glory for the freedom we have, but the struggle to keep it. Into that, you need your strength and your courage and your power. Thank you again. Amen.
Okay. I think in front of you, you all have the consent agenda, any items that anyone wishes to pull from the consent agenda and give their views. We say so. If not, I approve that motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'm going to pile the corners.
And of course, you did pull corners three. And Doc, your question?
My question is, can you take, you can't, can you pay out of another fund? You can't use payroll out of another fund, referring to the deputies paid. You can't take that money from operating money, can you?
The law does have to be used.
What do I have to pay?
You can transfer.
You can transfer? Okay. Thank you. My mind, thank you.
Well, this is because they're part-time. They're not really part-time, that's probably the wrong word to use, but they, they are on per, isn't it? You know, it's per, as in.
Since it's so early in the year.
Same to me, it's payroll.
Since it's so early in the year, we're going to have Rob Peter to pay this woman and then have to do an additional later.
An additional one, what?
I think she requested more council cap, but she's also had a lot of more runs this time, this year than she's had.
Okay, so three corner items, either transfers as the input from consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
So we've got a motion and a second to approve consent agenda barring the three corner transfers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Okay. And first item other than the consent is review of financial reports. Currently, General Ledger is at five point five million, it's up from four point eight.
Go back to the corners.
Oh, cover those first. Okay. So the three corner transfers were pulled and Josh, if you'd like to speak.
Yeah, I mean, the, well, I have a number of questions, but my main concern is the, is the manner in which this is being conducted. We have not transferred and then done additionals historically. That's not how we have done business. And I'm not saying that there's not a situation where that might not be appropriate if something was urgent, but it speaks to, like, if it's that urgent, then there's been some, something materially changed enough that we need to have discussion about it. So, Chris, would you like to come up here? I have several questions. Okay. Can you just give us an overview, like, how did your, oh, I'm sorry.
We've had twenty calls already this year where normally we'd have four. In the past years, when I go back to look, we've had three before this time. We are on twenty now.
And the vast majority of those are required autopsy saves.
So that's on the most, or a real-time account, or a real-time accounting. So, oh, thank you.
The storage won't be accurate according to her things. I just submitted the bill today, but it was twenty-four fifty and I have two thousand.
So that's kind of fee in the red.
And my deputy pays in the red. So I moved from, my autopsy was down to eleven and I moved to put some in deputy, some in storage and then cell phone, I was not approved enough to begin with. So when Scott and I talked about it, he said, go ahead and make that transfer now. So.
I don't know about this question, but I know definitely she needs my.
I just turned it in this way.
Oh, okay.
And Doc?
What do you attribute, Jeff, or what?
White County and I have been neck and neck every year and it's the same way. And Putt County's had thirty already. I, I can't predict why they are dying, but I mean, we've had some unusual cases. I mean, I've been swamped.
I'm not familiar with the coroner laws and regulations of the coroner's office, but does every death require a coroner?
Yeah, every death except for hospice case.
Except what?
Hospice. We do get called for hospice on occasion, but that is the only time we are not required by the state of the year.
If I drop dead of heart attack tomorrow.
Then you're not on hospice and you're at home. They require a call.
Do you want to come investigate it?
We don't have to, we make the, we have to come, but we have to make the determination whether it's like an investigation or whether we can refer it out to a funeral home. But we have to make the scene or be consulted to be able to do that by state law.
So out of these twenty, how many were in county and how many are out of county? When they ask.
Those are all in county. I think I've paid one out of county fee this year from Tippy. We've had twenty calls. That's a lot. We had fifteen total investigations last year, just investigations, with I think thirty-eight calls.
Out of those twenty calls, how many have been strange or not in the realm?
Probably fifty.
No.
I don't know. I mean, fifty percent of it. We've had a lot that have been, been there for a couple of weeks, just unusual circumstances that sometimes we haven't been able to explain. I mean, we had an older person that couldn't explain it seems, so we called crime suit.
To me, it's kind of hard to control who's dying.
I mean, that's.
What percentage of your case will have been autopsy?
I'd have to look. I don't have that off the top of my head.
I make a motion to approve all three. A second.
We have a motion by Ethan Brown, second, to approve all three corner transfers. Any further discussion?
I have one additional question. Do you collect deputy out on every run you go on?
Not every, but most of them because I can't move somebody by myself.
And there aren't any other first responders or help to do that?
Not always. I mean, that's, that isn't necessarily the duty to do that. More than people don't necessarily want to do that.
What hasn't been done for less ever?
I've been using deputies since I've been in office. We just haven't had a high amount of calls, so, I mean, I can't get them to.
So you've sent ones like every time we board?
Almost. If I know ahead of time that it's not, sometimes I'll just put them on a standby and if I get there and it's going to be, you know, a home call, then I won't necessarily, I mean, it depends on the weight of the person, it depends on a lot of things, where they're at in the house. I mean, even if you're a home director and I can't always just do it ourselves.
And if I chance to get a wellness call, more than likely there's not an officer, a sheriff, deputy or someone.
There's officers there and they do help, but like I said, there's a lot of, I mean, two people can't always do the job. You've got stairs, you've got, like I said, different situations, a bath, small bath and, you know, you can't always just do two people and just the size of people alone.
You know, Chris, I just really appreciate your work and, you know, you probably feel like you're getting grilled and, you know, I don't see it personally, but, you know, you answer questions well and you're doing a great job and appreciate your work and I know it's a very low-paying job, but just wanted to say that.
Further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the three corner transfers. All those in favor, signify by a same aye. Aye. Those opposed, same side. Now, I agree with that for my answer, but. Currently, as I was stating, General Ledger was five point five million, up from four point eight in March. Right now, a quarter of the year, before and through the year, we should be at twenty-five percent. Most, everyone, when I went down through all the different departments, most everyone is in that, commissioners still continue to be a little bit high and going back to January when the health seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars was true, would create a hundred percent of that amount. Currently, there are thirty-nine as we go through sets of what months that will work its way down. So, Tim, if you'd like to start us off, please.
Sure. So emergency management is at sixteen point nine nine percent year-to-date. I don't have any concerns there. Local road and street, no concerns. MVH Fund eleven seventy-six is at fifteen point eight eight percent year-to-date, no concerns there. Just a quick update, I've been in communication with Kent, the Community Crossings Grant and some of the federal funding that they're looking at through NDOT is, is promising for this year and is gearing up to start roadwork that'll go through the spring and summer. So that's, that's all positive. Q Bridge is at twenty-four percent year-to-date, no concerns. Supplemental adult probation at twenty-eight point three six percent year-to-date. I mentioned this last month, I'm going to mention it again, and there's still additional work that I need to do to nail this down and get some further explanation, but second deputy probation officer is at forty-six percent of the line item budget. So, you know, through a quarter of the year, they're almost halfway through those funds. That's just a call-out that I want to make. Supplemental juvenile probation, no concerns there either.
All my departments are looking good. I am working with my one, Brittany, and her budget, trying to figure out, other than that, all mine are okay.
All are okay. As I was through mine, like I stated previously, commissioners are the only one, simply because of the move that the May everyone else is at, twenty-eight, twenty-six to even nineteen percent, and council's at thirteen percent. So I don't have any concerns at this point.
I'm not concerned except obviously coroners at thirty-two percent, and it's at twenty-five percent, and that doesn't even include all the bills. Probably pressure to forty-five percent and thirty-two, clocher twenty-three and so on the others, twenty-one. Transfer stations at twenty, so we're in all good shape.
Auditor assessor and quarter on the issue.
Very good. And auditor report, Beth?
Okay, I sent out the reports on April fourteenth. Are there any questions about them? I have a question on, for budget for next year for twenty twenty-three insurance. Usually everybody puts their interest amount in their budget. How long do you want that done this year?
So, when do we get the sheet from the big insurance provider? You're talking about health insurance, right?
Right, but, you know, like, various plan puts in theirs, county general.
So where I arrived at the number that we used this year is the Apex, that's the plan where I was looking for. Apex gives us a sheet that says what's your minimum, maximum, and expected cost per employability. And so that's where, that's where the number came from. So when we get that from Apex, that's what I would use the budget.
But is each department going to budget or is there going to be? Does each department need to put theirs in?
Oh, that's, I understand.
Or do we just?
Well, anybody that has their own fund, we put it in, but anybody, everybody else would go through the insurance.
Is it going to be like normal, I guess?
I think it'd be cleaner, knowing that that will.
Normal and then transferring in January?
Yes. I would agree.
Okay.
Especially, I mean, you know, we have insurance stuff.
Yes, yes, and hers is coming up. She's a little fast because her grant, yeah, her grant is due in budget, June first to be done.
Like I said, I think, I think that's because we get to see each partner, market analyze and their amounts and then make the transfer.
I did tell them to use the same, or her to use the same amount as last year.
It's not going to get any cheaper, I don't think.
Well, she has a lot of employees. The other thing too is, even though that they do not have somebody on the insurance, they don't know if they're going to be there the full year, so they should probably budget something.
A little extra.
Yeah. Okay. And then the other is the agreement for Jackie. Do you have a copy of that in your stack? That's the plan from AIC.
I'm going to approve Jackie's contract.
Okay.
Contract and AIC contract, we can call her at any time, volunteer or the district committee.
It's whatever states in that.
I don't think she's going to not take your call. It's related to the scope of the services or that. It's not for like anytime you get a question ever, but around budget. Yeah, I don't, yeah. She's never not taken one.
Okay. Concerning Jackie, from this AIC agreement, we've got a motion from Josh Boo, second from Lauren Soffer. Any further?
Do we absolutely need her? Do you think?
Absolutely.
I mean, it's three hundred dollars a day, I mean, but every time she's here, so.
It's not what, when she's here is what she does in her office and all the way through. She does a lot of that prep work before she gets here, so.
I mean, full respect, you weren't here for much of the. Oh, I understand. I'm just asking, I'm just, just asking, so.
I would say with you.
I think.
I'd say absolutely, we need her.
It's very important and I, you know, I enjoy hearing her projections and, you know, what we may be receiving for the next year and how to base our budgets off of that, et cetera, et cetera. I.
And she can pull the big numbers in a matter of minutes and we could do that, yes, but I would much rather have somebody that had a better complete concentration on giving the right numbers, the right sheets that we work off of.
He's got to pull something, what's going on at state level.
Other counties are doing and just the thrill of something else in there is with this RCA money, the way that it has been set up. I'm concerned about maybe affecting our tax rates. I want to talk to Jackie about that and she's going to know. Because that's over a million dollars we want to get back into the county general and on your additionals today, not get back into, but to use for the RCA, it's a different setup that they could, Tilly and Burns and Blumberg and, which one is, Burns and Blumberg, right?
Say it, Charlie?
It's set up, how we're doing it, and I have questions about tax rates. We don't want to mess with our, have our tax rates low or higher because we're doing it this way. That's one question I, maybe we'll stop and talk about, so. She can help us with that.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, I stated a motion and a second by Josh and Doc. All those in favor of accepting Jackie's agreement, contract, signify by a same aye. Aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion passes, seven zero. Second.
That's all I have. And I have Bill, here for his.
Commissioner Brown?
Good morning.
Good morning, Bill.
I think you probably don't know anything about what I'm, like we're discussing about is the, I'm needing a location for our emergency management and coroner. Those are the two offices that through the years we've found to be just totally inadequate. The, having the emergency management down in the cellar, because I think they live in the basement here, is not, it's not adequate office space size-wise and it's certainly not adequate for my office. And we have no space for the coroner's office. We had a coroner's building in Camden that was donated to us many years ago. It had been an ambulance garage and then when they disbanded the volunteer ambulance service over there, they gave it to us. The way I understand it, that was before my time. But it was in total disrepair, in the opinion of the commissioners, but it was not repairable to be an adequate building. So we sold it. Now we put in an offer on what used to be Christian Church out here, which later than the Tribute Center, and it's a two twenty, or what is it you're addressing here? It's out of Cottage Street. Yeah. And so we put in an offer of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on it. That's, you funded the appraisals that we had to do for the state statute and they came in that we, they came in correct as far as allowing us to spend the money on that. As you know, we cannot spend more, we, you cannot spend more than the average of the two appraisals that are required. And the offer that we have extended of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for that building is not above those two appraisals. So we're here to ask for funding for the purchase of it. It was, of course, the offer was extended pending approval of the council here and it was our suggestion, the commissioners suggested at the time to pull that money out of Edit. However, that's your discretion as far as where you want to pull it from or pay for it, should you decide to pay for it. I don't know if you have any more questions for me about it? I think I've covered it and like I said, I think you know as much about it as I do, so.
What was, what was the rationale behind this being economic development driven?
Well, it, for years, economic development money was statewide, was very confined to, it had to be for directly economic development, like advertising, purchasing property, things like that, for economic development. And the first one that I knew of that deviated from that, and I'm just, like, there are others in the state, but as far as in our area here was Lafayette when they built a health clinic out of that. And as time has gone on, it has been, the state has loosened those requirements to where it is, anything that is community enhancing or that improves the operations of the government to the point that it's a, it's a asset to the community is allowed under economic development. And since we, we have funds in that, that was, that was fully the reason. Didn't seem like it was going to adversely affect any other funds to go from. Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah. I'm not fighting the problem or anything, I've just got a question in my mind. What's the status of the RMC?
Out of that, I wish we had that. That would be much better.
Has it been sold?
Well, Packers owns it. And they, they.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, they have enough, they have a.
It's full.
It's being used right now.
Full of gills.
What did you say, Jeff?
It's full of gills, full of Packers.
Yeah. That would have been ideal. And years, built there back when I was on the council, Mr. Roush, or Dick, come up here, I was on the council. Dick though, Roach?
He knows.
Roach. I haven't thought of him for a while. Anyway, he said, he said, boy, if that building ever comes up over there, we need to get that. And we all kind of agreed on that, but it just kind of went and we never even got an opportunity to do it. But that would have been perfect.
I didn't know that was going to build it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Thank you.
So concerning the purchase of the five north comic street, been presented by Commissioner Brown, we utilize Edit funding for that purchase. Don't know if I should call for a motion for the purchase.
There's no, you can't pull for a motion to purchase, there's no money appropriate for it.
Okay. Then want to discuss appropriation of funds to purchase.
First, Edit, like, the idea of spending Edit dollars, we tax the people of this county for economic development and, and that's why we levy the tax when we levy it. And now, like, I have a really fundamental problem with saying we're going to levy the tax so that we can grow the county and then spending on a coroner's office, something ever. I, like. I, like, it, it, it's kind of up to a bait and switch from my perspective. Uh, I just, I, I don't agree with the use of those funds in that capacity. If we want to debate the merit of this project as a general fund or, you know, out of, out of, out of a bucket that is appropriate for that, I, I, I think that that's a, that's a conversation to have, but I, I, I think that it's just wrong headed to levy an economic development tax and then pay for a coroner's office, so it just doesn't make sense. But, I mean, so if somebody wants to take it in a different direction, I would, I would, I would welcome that conversation. I, I just, I can't make the jump to why we would levy the taxpayers with a tax to grow the county and then spend on taxes.
Scott, where would you think that we should vote on that? I was thinking, um, between Rainy Day and, um, Riverboat. And the two amounts that I was thinking is maybe a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from Rainy Day. You currently have three point seven million in there. Uh, Riverboat, take a hundred thousand from Riverboat, we have four hundred thousand in there. That's what my thoughts were.
So we, I brought this up earlier, I'll bring it up again. We talked about how we're going to, uh, operationally fund this. If the coroner already is over budget operationally. Now we're going to add additional space that needs utilities, it needs infrastructure, it needs network, it needs furniture, it needs, uh, shelving for supply storage, and, and the list goes on and on and on. Um, it's going to add operational cost to our budgets year over year in addition to the, the upcoming need for additional operations costs for a jail, um, and staffing for a jail. I, I, I just, I just want to ask again, what is the plan for the monthly recurring cost for more property, uh, over and above just the purchase price?
I have thought about that, and I came up with a theory of we're paying rent and utilities on Detective Center out there, that I have asked the question if it could move in there with them. And was told that sure, it probably could. So that would appear as some of the cost of not having to have double utilities, double, you don't have to pay rent.
As a cost analysis, then, uh?
A cost analysis. It costs about twenty-five thousand dollars for that building out there. That was a cost analysis that the sheriff gave us when they wanted to rent that. So if they don't pay the twenty-five thousand, I would say twenty-five thousand would go towards that. There's my cost analysis.
But, but we spent ten-ish thousand, more than ten thousand dollars operationalizing that building with doors.
Security.
Security, all those things, that's now some cost that's going away, that we're going to again incur, incur there.
Well, plus they have to stay out there for two years, it's been a two-year contract.
Right, so I mean, it's like, it's, I mean.
You just wanted a, a, a how rationalizing on how to say.
Well, I don't want to rationalize.
After the two years, that money would go over there.
Well, I got a question, Mike, how much are we spending, you, you know, to store bodies, to Paul and to Monticello and Tiffanou County and all this time that we invest? I mean, you, you know, it looks like to me what we need to do is eventually get a grant to pay for, uh, freezers, refrigeration, so that's really, you know, my goal is to see us progress as a county to supply what we told our taxpayers that we would supply them, rather than shopping all that out to, to, to Monticello and Lafayette and all that. I mean, that's, that's going to be the rationale in my terms, and do you want to speak to that, Christian?
Um, okay.
And I, Mike, if you would like to come in, I'm, I'm going to have Mike come up also. Mike has been exceptionally diligent in seeking out grants. Um, and if you would like to address those, I think that's, would be highly important to, you know, talk after Christmas, finish some of the grants, if you got one, I, about fixing some things on that building as well.
What is the amount, if we purchased that building, what is the amount to give this building to what you need? And to what you need? Because he's saying, you know, like, what are, what is the other cost besides this building that you know we're going to incur to get this building set and ready to roll?
Well, so are you, you talking, you want a fully operational morgue?
Because like he said, each, there's going to be more.
He was asking on the utilities, the current utilities and that.
Well.
I just, I want to make sure that I'm answering the right question. What? I can't answer his question on how the utilities are going to be paid.
That's not.
Because we're designing this building.
Everybody said, it's everyone's, the build-out plus the utility, build-out plus operational.
We're operating this building, we're not going to do anything with it.
And OpEx.
You're on one side.
So you have CatEx and OpEx for that location, to get it operationalized.
Okay, if you're going to put a morgue in for it. Which the commissioners, when we looked at it, the commissioners said, you know, look, including a morgue in, uh, and doing the renovations for that. By putting them, do all the construction and that to put a morgue in, I looked at the non-union contractor, union contractor, both of them were over a year out before they could do any construction. It was, the non-union guy was, he called me this morning, he's still finishing up his solid numbers, but he was about eight and five thousand. The union guy was at like one twenty-five thousand.
To do what?
To do the build-out on the morgue.
Just a morgue.
To put a, a morgue and an autopsy room in that, at that facility. And that's putting the separate ventilation system in there to cut down on, making them decompose bodies and that. Um, the, that includes the, all the renovations and that with it. Um, as far as on my side, as far as the physical security upgrades that would have to come with that building, the state homeland security grant is getting ready to open up. If this building was purchased, again, it's a grant, I can't promise that grants are guaranteed. But with the homeland security grant, uh, protection of soft targets is a, one of the, uh, national priorities. I can apply and do the physical security upgrades to that building through a grant. So the physical upgrades to that building costs a million, if that grant is awarded. Now, the cost of utilities, water, all that, I can't cover many of those. So any, any of the physical security upgrades, I can apply for grants for them. Some of the, uh, equipment, like you were talking, the shelving and that would transfer from what we have downstairs, because I have a lot of shelving in there. I bought through my ledger of time, you know, through all the COVID stuff. A lot of that would transfer down there, so I think some of that would be going.
So the main cost would be even more, you know, fifty thousand, not specifically.
But some of the other upgrades too, there's, there's other grants that I can go through to try and get other, uh, of the, what, you know, working on emergency operations center for replacements we had and to open it up. I can go through, K M B, you can apply for that, some people for that.
Yes, well, I think it's, it would be. Might find a grant for a morgue too, right?
I might. I'm working on that, I think, I mean, there's, one with her. There, there's tons of grants out there, but there's certain grants I can write, and there's certain grants I can't write, you know, so. That's where we'll, we'll have to reach out to the commissioners and the councils around the floor to see what grants that purchase can write for the county, and then who runs that project per se after this.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion to purchase property at four oh five North Cottage Street out of Rainy Day fund, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, Riverboat out of a hundred thousand.
On the border, we have no variation, I make a motion to purchase anything, because there's not appropriate funds.
Secret motion, advertise.
Make a motion to advertise. Yeah. Can I do that?
Yep.
I'll second.
Can you call for a question?
Driving down, a hundred and twenty-five thousand out of Rainy Day and a hundred thousand out of Riverboat.
Hundred and a hundred. One twenty-five.
One twenty-five and one hundred. Got a motion, you can call the writer. Second, Commissioner Brown, any further discussion?
I, I, I do. I, I call for a question.
Okay.
You can call for a question.
I call for a question?
I. So I'm going to go, say my piece, um, we have a unknown enormous liability, both an operational and a capital expenditure for a jail. And we, there's not a person in this room that has a plan for how to pay for it that has been presented to me.
You're listening to the last meeting, you're saying, uh, the jail.
A, a fully funded plan.
For the jail, yes, sir. There was four of us here, Scott and Tracy came up with a plan for planning our jail. This thing.
Do you agree with that, Tracy, that it's fully funded?
It is not fully funded until the proposed amount go through.
Until what proposed, do I?
Until the proposed amounts that were on the sheet actually go through.
Are you saying the, the amount that it's going to cost or the amount that we're putting forth from all these different accounts?
Oh.
All of them.
Okay, so we don't know how much the jail is going to cost, this is point one, and we don't know what.
And we do, you know, that now?
That was close to.
Oh, okay, well, I don't want to get into that, but, like, we've been told what a jail is going to cost for the last three years, and none of those numbers have been accurate to date, so. I would argue that we, we don't know what it's going to cost. So, but if it does, that's great, uh, I would, I would love for it to come down in budget. Um, I, I just think, like, we're, we're just advertising, but I just want to throw it out there that we have enormous bills coming down. To date, we have not had a fully funded plan that has, has been presented that, that the council had, had an agreement on about how we were going to spend the money to do that. And we're talking about spending more money than we, when we didn't have enough money to pay for the last thing that we wanted to do. So, uh, just a pause for caution for the, for what's coming down. We also don't have a cost analysis of, of the one. So there's just, there's just a lot of question marks here that I would ask everybody to, to do some research on before we come back here and actually spend the taxpayers' money on something. That's my, that's it.
Yes, Scott.
I'd probably be in favor of buying the building at this time, with Rainy Day and any other. I am, I'm not ready to agree to establish a board and autopsy room and everything. I think this can be farmed out efficiently without the extreme expense of a full plate board. But I think emergency management, the moon, the coroner needs an office. I'm not, I'm not ready to jump out of a hundred thousand dollars for a morgue and go out. I think it should be done more recently, outsourced. That's, I think.
And at this point, we're only talking about advertising. So, any other discussion, questions? So, Paul, your motion to advertise one twenty-five on Rainy Day and a hundred thousand on a Riverboat in two seconds? All of those in favor of advertising, um, those two amounts from Rainy Day and Riverboat, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Same sign. Motion passes by two.
I have a question.
Sure.
If we. If we, um, advertise this for next, I don't know, put it in the paper next week, because they were wanting to have closing, and I know that we can have it appropriated or whatever, because I didn't know exactly where, and they want to get it, and it said something about Riverboat and everything. But that's not the only reason, they didn't think about that, I think. Um, and Ted had written at the, um, resolution, and he wanted.
Here. Just forgot my notes on there.
Okay, um. Because it came here and says that I would wire the transfers and everything after reading this yesterday. Actually, it should say that you're authorizing me to, uh, advertise it. But to sit, to still make their deadline of, um, their closing date on May sixth, is there any possible way that you guys could meet on that day? Because that's, I believe, is the tenth day that it has to be advertised. And morning of May sixth, so they can have the closing on May sixth afternoon, and you guys approve it, I mean, is that it? I mean, I'm just trying to help them out, so they don't have to wait till the nineteen, and then, you know, they want to either get a time market or be sold.
I'm, I'm all right with advertising or having.
I, yeah, I don't think there's any problem calling a special meeting that day, there's enough time to do it. I can go, just getting in at one.
I don't know, I would see whether it is that, if it does not pass. Well, then, then it's just.
Yeah, but they will know that day, and it's going to wait another.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Where, where's the date, the May ten, May sixth date, May sixth or May tenth?
Sixth.
Where, um, can't stand after advertising, that much we sell.
Oh. That just happened.
Where does the date come from?
Closing date from the, for the title company, I believe, and probably the agreement of commissioners. I haven't seen actually a agreement, contract.
I would prefer they wait till after our company even ships a closing date.
I don't think they're going to fire you, I mean, I, I guess we could go on to it, but. I don't, I don't see any reason to call a special meeting unless there's an extended waiting service.
I, I've not been in on, I don't know if there is or not, I was just trying to simplify. Because I mean, if you're not, if we don't pass it on the sixth, then they close the, they don't have a closing.
To the motion.
Bill, do you think there's a problem changing the closing date a couple of weeks and?
Getting them to extend it? I, I don't have any idea, I mean, I, I'm, if we sold it, no, I wouldn't think it would be a problem. But I don't, I don't know what they're, I don't know if they have someone else on the wings, I don't know how impatient we are, I.
Jeff, can you call and ask them?
Does, does the agreement the commissioner signed have a contingency for, for funding being available for the closing? Do you know?
Back there.
So is, is the, the agreement, the purchase agreement, if there is one, is there a contingency for funding needs to be available?
Right.
Okay, so it, it sounds like the parties have already agreed that if it's not available, then that's not a closing. I'd have to look at the actual agreement.
Right.
I mean, that's pretty typical in agreements like that. So you, you either get financing or, or it's, it's basically void, and then you could agree to, to reset. And this is kind of the same thing as a personal purchase, right? If you don't get financing for no fault of your own, then you don't, you're not forced to close, can't.
I would think it'd be exactly the same.
Yeah, I think so. So.
Have they not had it?
I'm all prepared to deal with this.
The appointment's in 30 days, so it's closing.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a long month and.
We should be smarter.
It's a figure number, but you know, I don't want to bore people. Figure number. Let me say you want cost analysis.
Yeah, it's not hard to me. It's like.
It, it's not, no, we don't have anybody to do it. It's just like, go be thoughtful about the operational expense. Because like, the thing that you put out with the operational expense for, for the jail.
We're going to talk about that.
Yeah. I mean, there's, I mean, you can argue the numbers, but that's the exercise, right? I mean.
Because you're never going to know about that number when you run someone on.
Yeah.
No.
Scott, here, I think.
Certainly.
We've, I'm, I don't have the offer in front of me. I don't know if that's what Beth went to, to get or not. But it seems like that we, and you may have just discussed this and I didn't hear it back there. But, um, I think we're, we're looking at probably six weeks or so. I mean, when we counted ahead, we thought we had it all worked out on the time here. And it's not working out just exactly right. But, um, I know that they had several look at that building before us and I wouldn't doubt they've had, uh, what, uh, Mike says they had four before us look at it.
At least four that I know of.
I, I would encourage you to do it with all the haste you could. So we comply with the offer that we do have. Because that was an offer that we put in in good faith that we'll follow through on this. And if we can get it done and financed. Now, I realize, as your attorney has said to me, that, uh, you know, a lot of times when you're personally buy a home or something like that, you, you know, you put it in contingent upon all the financing going through it. A lot of times that strings out for a long time. Uh, and that's, that's part of buying real estate. Maybe that's the situation with this. But, uh, I, I think that, uh, I know Mike and I looked at, at, uh, at least three other, uh, at least three properties for this. And, um, um, this is the least expensive of the three by far, by half. And, uh, I, I think it would work for what we need. So I'm in, I'm just encouraging you, if we're going to do it, let's do it. Okay, that, that's my opinion. I would, I would encourage you to have a special meeting and.
I'd make a motion to have a special meeting May 6th at 10 o'clock. To, to.
Let's see what she wrote down. Okay.
I want to go either.
What do you want to go?
They said it wasn't a deal breaker, but, um, that you waited till May 19th. The only thing is, which we're still getting the money, but we would have to reimburse this for the taxes. Um, if you, if you look at this and it shows that you would get credit for $12,000.